For 13th, 2018, meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. I would like to ask members of the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the school board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5. Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1. Mr. Bobby James, District 3. Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4. Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2. Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent. Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Dr. Mayer, you have a special board member who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Yes, ma'am, we do, and I'm going to turn that over to you to lead that introduction.
It is my distinct pleasure this evening to thank Dr. Bobby James for his 11 years of service on the Marion County School Board. He has been wise. He has helped mentor those of us that are new to the board, and we will miss you and wish you all the best in your retirement, and we want to give you a little something to get dusty on your shelves. Just say thank you so much for the service that you have given.
Thank you.
Bobby, so very much. And before he gives the inspiration... (applause). Before he gives the inspiration and pledge, I also would like to ask Ms. Angie Boynton to please stand and come forward. We want to thank Angie for her years of service on the board as well. Angie came to the board in 2010, and Angie, we want to thank you for all your service to the board. Thank you. (applause).
It's always a pleasure to address my colleagues. Inspiration and pledge, to me, is about people. I can read a poem, and I can talk about various things, but it's about people. And I'll start with Jim Haley. And I want all of you to understand, at one point, Jim Haley and myself were mortal enemies. Each coached Vanguard, I coached Forest.
Oh, my.
And it was the greatest battles you ever wanted to see. But Jim Haley was an individual that meant a lot to this community. He was not just basketball. On Friday, as I was coming back from Gainesville, I got the call from Coach Haley. And Coach Haley said, "Bobby, we gotta do something about Evergreen and Oak Crest." I talked with Stacy McGrady. Stacy McGrady played with the Orlando Magics at one time, and he's a part of the Orlando Magic right now. And he could stay at my house, but can you get the principals of the schools to let him come out and talk with those kids? Because Jim Haley knew, and he knew from the early days, when he had the Road Runner Program, and I had the Forest Little League, our little teams, that kids learn at an early age. This is why he was so successful. And this community will have an opportunity to recognize him on the 17th over at Vanguard, on Jim Haley's court. He was a great person, and he was an inspiration. But let me talk about the inspiration I get from the people that I've known through this community, the kids that have come to school, worked hard, and behaved. I think of...I think of them every time I see something that they've accomplished. Every time I see a trash truck go by, I think of one of my former players that he said, "You know, this is how I got my start." That was Jerry Larenko. And he said, "My daddy was a trash collector, but if you see waste pour around here, he had something to do with that, and he's always giving back to this community." I think of Big D Roofing. When I always would get on Big D Roofing, Donnie, about working hard, life is hard but fair. And every time I go around a roofing company, I see the things that he's accomplished. Hammett Bowen, Hammett Construction. When I look at what they do and what they did for our community in Chatham, I came to them and I said, "Hey, I have some kids that are out there playing in the road, and they need a place to go, a place to go." They came into Chatham and put up a placebo. Not only do they have a place to study now, but they also have a place for the community to meet. And these are the kids that inspire me so. Michelle Michaels, a young lady that came in and said, "I want to play basketball." And, you know, she was good enough to be on the boys' team. She went to the University of Florida in their summer camp, and she got the MVP. But when she came back to the high school, I said, "Michelle, you know, I could put you on the boys' team, but I know that you could help the girls' team." And sure enough, Michelle was one of the best players that we ever had, and I think she was...she's currently, if you look at the records at Stetson University, she's in the Hall of Fame as one of the top basketball players around. So when I look at what we're doing, I look at other heroes. I look at Howard Gunn. He was an ag teacher. He was one of these guys that constantly looking to do something about a food desert in West O'Callaghan. So I get excited about that. But I have one kid, one young man, rather, I'm ever so proud of, and he will be leading us in this pledge of allegiance today, and this is Dennis Lewis. Dennis, I met when I first came to Forest, and he was standing outside the gym, and he didn't have anywhere to go. And he said, "Coach, I need some help. I want you to help me to go to school." And sure enough, I said to him, "Well, come back tomorrow." And, you know, when you tell a kid to come back tomorrow, if they're not sincere, they don't usually show back up. But when I got to the gym, he was sitting up in the bleachers, never played for me. But by the same token, I made some calls for him, and he got...we were able to get him at DeMaris College. He became the MVP of that. He came back to O'Callaghan. He became a teacher, an English teacher. The thing that I'm so proud of him about, he's currently teaching at Beaufort as an English teacher. He coached, and he did a lot of neat things for the community. One of his pet projects, on every Labor Day, he recognized the unsung heroes of our community. Robert Williams, a person that y'all may not know, but he had the impact on so many young people in this area. He worked at the auditorium. You may call it the Crossgate Center. He provided a banquet for...Andy Harshman, with fellow players where he passed away, and he had a banquet and a recognition for all of his players. Jim Haley, Frank Washington, all these people have come out and sat underneath his tarp. He provided lunch, he provided plaques, and he recognized them for the service that they have provided to the young people in this community. I'm so proud of this young man. And I know you bought a package or something for me. Bring it on. And actually, he's a teacher in Beaufort, and I see him, and he come home. He's out on 40, if you want to come out there. It has grown to the point where he...when I went out there last year, that's the last session, he had a deputy sitting out there, and I'm saying, "Is it that big or is that bad?" And so I'd like to introduce a person that I think this community should be very proud of in the sense that he really gave back to his community. He was at my retirement, or whatever I call that, and he presented something, but it was too magnificent for me to just put it on a shelf without you seeing it. Dennis, if you would.
Thank you very much. I want to present this to Coach James, of course, and say that he has done for me, but obviously I cannot keep it to myself. He belongs to the community and the others. He's a great inspiration, and that was a perfect word for it. So on this eagle that he likes, represents obviously the symbol of bravery and freedom, I have Coach Bobby James, and I still kind of see him as a coach, lifetime of achievement. He's soaring high like the eagle, as an outstanding coach, educator, and community leader. So we all appreciate all the things you've done for us, Coach.
(applause). I'm going to have to stand. Can you do it?
I can. Everyone, stand, please.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the November 13th, 2018, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Mayer. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Ms. Boynton. We'll wait till Mr. James has a chance to sit down.
Okay. I'm sitting.
All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 28th, 2018, school board meeting?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the... Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 6th, 2008 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Second.
Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All of those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 11th, 2018, school board meeting?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 20th Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Second.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. Looks like we've caught up. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 25th School Board Meeting?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 4th, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 9th, 2018, School Board Meeting?
Move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like sign. Ms. Angie?
Thank you.
Motion passed 5-0. Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Founder and Director, would like to recognize Express Care of Bellevue as the business partner for Bellevue Santos Elementary School.
Thank you. Chairman McCall, it's always an honor for me to be here and address the board and Superintendent. Dr. Mayer, good evening. Before I start our official presentation, I just wanted to take a personal moment to say a thank you to Ms. Boynton and Mr. James for serving so well on the school board, representing the students and the teachers and the citizens of Marion County. I had the opportunity to serve on the school board alongside both of you, and I learned a lot from you and grew with you. Ms. Boynton and Mr. James, sometimes we may have had disagreements, but I know that in our hearts, we always put our students first. And Ms. Boynton, I still have a book of poetry that you gave me a few years ago, and I have that in my office, and it does provide inspiration. And Mr. James, every once in a while, sir, you or I pick up the phone and call each other, and I know that when we do that, we're going to have a good conversation.
We do.
And I've learned some things for you, and I have some Bobby Jamesisms that I use sometimes, whether I'm talking to colleagues or talking to my own children at home. I quote you sometimes, sir, and you two will always be remembered as serving, serving so well, your community, which I know that you both love, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Another thing that I love is recognizing business partners, because they are also people in our community that have stepped forward to make a difference. So calling to the podium now, I'll have Ashley Kemp, who is the principal of Bellevue Santos Elementary School, and their new business partner, Mike Crimmy from Express Care of Bellevue. He is the CEO and owner of Express Care. Come on up. And I'll just tell you that Bellevue Santos has been looking for a business partner for a long time. So we were so excited when Mrs. Kemp contacted us, and she said, "I've done it. I've made a connection." And the connection goes even further. I found out that Mr. Crimmy's daughter-in-law is the Teacher of the Year this year at Bellevue Santos Elementary School, so a lot to be proud of at Bellevue Santos, so we're excited about that, and always excited to have a new partner. So before I give you each your certificate, Mrs. Kemp, would you like to say something?
I would just like to thank Express Care of Bellevue. We've looked for a long time for a business partner, and not only Express Care, but more specifically Mr. Crimmy, who's vested in education and more so building the foundational years for us, and we have had some good conversations over the summer, wanting to know, not just that he wants to support, but he wants to know our goals and where we're going, and so we are very excited to have a vested partner in our students at Bellevue Santos and with Mike Crimmy, so thank you.
Mr. Crimmy?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for having me here. My name is Mike Crimmy. I'm the owner, founder, president, CEO, and I'm also a practicing physician assistant at Express Care of Bellevue. We've been blessed to be in business for the past 22 years in Bellevue, and all I can say is probably the reason we have him partners is because Ashley Kemp has just recently become the principal of Bellevue Santos, and nobody before has ever asked. So I am here to say that going forward, we are proud to support the Marion County Public School System in any way that we can, and Marion County as a whole, and I'm just proud to be the business partner now of Bellevue Santos Elementary School, so thank you very much.
One for your practice and one for your school, and Mr. Christian's going to take some photographs.
You know you have to get back.
Okay. And Judy Zanetti, you also have, would like to recognize Meadow Brook Church.
Fun continues.
As the business partner for College Park.
All right, Mrs. Forsythe, would you come on up here? Terry from College Park Elementary, our principal. And then from Meadow Brook Church, we have Pastor Forte, come on up, please, and Pastor Frazier. And this is a relationship, again, that started with communication between Ms. Forsythe and the church, and we are excited, Ms. Forsythe's excited to have them partnering, and I'll allow her to speak.
We do want to thank Meadow Brook Church. They have been partnering with us over the time that I've been at College Park, and they bring people, they bring supplies, they roll up their sleeves, and they do the hard work, and they've done that kind of partnering, and now with this added financial support, we really appreciate everything they do for our kids. They're there for us. I know anytime I call, they would do anything they can for us, so we really appreciate that.
Pastor?
Yes, thank you so much. We're honored, really, to join the team with you guys, and especially with College Park. And on behalf of our pastors, Tim and Alicia Gilligan, we just want to say thank you for the great work that you do, and our teachers, our educators, our staff does, in our community to care for our kids, and just want you to know that not only are we excited to partner physically and financially, but we partner with prayer, and we want you to know that we pray for you and for the staff and for the teachers, our students, our families. We care about this community, and we care about seeing lives changed, and what you're doing and what our teachers and educators are doing are making a huge difference in our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you. No, I say all the time, schools cannot do it alone, and we cannot underestimate the potential and the power of these community partners. Thank you all. Ms. Zanetti? Ms. Lindsay Barber, Secondary Program Specialist for Social Studies, would like to recognize the winners of the American Founders Month Art and Writing Contest winners. Good evening, Lindsay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Mayer. The month of September was designated American Founders Month, and all of our schools were encouraged to coordinate instruction at all grade levels related to our nation's founding fathers. And although our students do take social studies every day, social studies instruction, September was really a time to reassert the importance of celebrating our nation's founding fathers. And under the leadership of Dr. Mayer, each school took on the responsibility of coordinating campus-wide activities and learning experience for our students, and hopefully you saw those. Many of them were tweeted out and put on social media. But at the district level, we coordinated the writing and art contests for K-12 students, and overall, 398 essays were submitted, 231 pieces of artwork. And many thanks goes to the members of the Daughters of the American Revolution, who are here with us tonight, and they graciously spent hours reviewing the entries and selecting tonight's winners. So to begin with art, this year's art contest encouraged students to submit entries based on the theme of "Celebrate America, Celebrate the Constitution." The winning entry for K-2 artwork was submitted by Evy McCoy. Evy, excuse me, Evy McCoy. Evy's in the second grade at Ward Highlands Elementary School. The winning entry for 3 through 5 artwork is Dennis Rotella, and Dennis is in the fifth grade at Madison Street Elementary School. The middle school winning entry was created by Jonah Slatton, and Jonah's in the eighth grade at Osceola Middle School. And the high school winning entry was submitted by Tristan Vining, and Tristan is in 11th grade at Bellevue High School. For the writing contest this year, it charged our students with researching various American founders and then using their argumentative writing skills to answer the prompt, "Who should be celebrated as the most important American founder?" The elementary winner was Gavin Walkler, and Gavin's in the fifth grade at Madison Street Elementary School. In his essay, Gavin argued that Alexander Hamilton deserved the title of most important founder because even though he was never president, he helped establish the nation's economic system, which gives all Americans opportunity and the ability to achieve the American dream. Zachary Pham is the middle school writing contest winner, and Zachary researched the Culper spy ring and argued they should be celebrated as the most important founders because they risked their lives to give pertinent information to General Washington, which helped win the Revolutionary War. Zachary's from Howard Middle School. And Kendesha Moore wrote the winning high school entry from Dunellen High School, and in her essay, she argued that James Armistead should be considered the most famous and important American founder because although he was enslaved at the time, he risked his life to provide secret intel that ultimately helped the Patriots win the Revolutionary War. So those are our... And again, we want to thank the Daughters of the American Revolution, who are here with us tonight to select the...for selecting the winners, and thank you to all of...
Could they stand, Ms. Barber? Could they stand?
Yes. Yes. And all of the teachers who encouraged and inspired our students and helped them with their writing and artistic abilities, so thank you. So, thank you.
There are teachers and principals, too. Come on up and get your pictures.
Any other teachers here want to come up with their...
Come on up.
Or principals?
Congratulations to all of you.
Good job, everybody.
Thanks, Ms. Barber. Thanks, Ms. Dawson. We have a motion to adopt a proclamation recognizing the second Wednesday of November, which is November 14, 2018, as Education Support Professionals Day. Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, Mr. Dante Prophet, President of Marion Essential Support Personnel, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation. However, board members, we need to vote first. So, all of those in favor of November 14 being Education Support Professionals Day, please vote aye and opposed like sign. Mr. Christian?
Let me read this proclamation. It's entitled "Education Support Professionals Day." And it reads, "Whereas the second Wednesday in November will mark the annual observance of Education Support Professionals Day, whereas our education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, whereas the success of Marion County students relies upon the support staff to be positive role models, whereas support staff have a major role in assisting our educators who shape the minds which will create the future, and whereas all support staff in Marion County have an important role to play in ensuring that all of today's students are prepared to meet the challenges established by high educational standards. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida recognizes the second Wednesday of November to be Education Support Professionals Day this year, that is November 14, 2018, tomorrow, for those who aren't near a calendar. And it's dated today by each of you, it's also signed by each of you. So, Mr. Prophet, on behalf of the board and the superintendent, let me present this proclamation to you. I know you have some words to share as well, but to you and to all of your colleagues, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you so much, Mr. Christian. Madam Chair, McCall, Superintendent Dr. Mayor, Board Members, Ms. Lopez, Mr. Gibbs, thank you. First, I would like to honor Mr. James and Ms. Boynton. Thank you for all you do for our kids that you have done. It's going to be different not seeing you guys up there. And thank you for speaking to me and mentoring me personally over the years. I really do appreciate that. Thank you. So, Education Support Professionals, first I'd like to introduce you to some of ours right here in Marion County. First, I want to introduce you to Ms. Clemmons, who retired last year after over 30 years working, 33 years, working for Marion County Public School out of East Marion as instructional paraprofessional. Thank you. And we have Ms. Meriwether, who is at Wyamina Park as an instructional paraprofessional. And we also have her daughter, Ms. Meriwether, who is an instructional paraprofessional in our alternative learning programs. Education Support Professionals in Marion County and in communities across the nation will be spotlight on tomorrow, November 14, as students, parents, teachers, school administrators, and the general public learn more and celebrate Education Support Professionals. Education Support Professionals are essential partners in safe and welcoming public schools for all our children. National ESP Day is a good time to celebrate the contribution of our community every day. Education Support Professionals are the receptionists that provide a welcoming smile to kids as they enter our school. They are the clerks that ensure that student privacy is upheld. They are the paraprofessionals alongside the classroom teacher providing specialized, interactive instruction to our most at-risk students. They are health clinic assistants, taking the temperature, computer techs, solving complex technology problems. These are the people that drive our children to school, help them cross the street, provide them a nutrition meal, and keep the school building clean and safe. Education Support Professionals are the unsung hero of the public school. It is time we recognize their hard work and expertise by telling them, "Thank you." So, tomorrow, one thing that we're doing, we're asking, why don't we wear the color red for Ed tomorrow to say, "Thank you for Education Support Professionals around the nation." What do we do? A lot of our Education Support Professionals, they work two or three jobs just to get by. But yet, they come every day to school with a smile on their face, working with our special needs kids, greeting parents who are happy and some sometimes little irate. So, tomorrow, principals, teachers, everywhere, go. Tell your receptionist, tell your cafeteria lady, tell your cafeteria monitor, tell your custodian, you know, "Thank you for all you do." So, I appreciate you, I appreciate every employee of Marion County Public School. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the purchaser's petition for release of reserved mineral rights regarding the March 27, 2018 board-approved contract for sale and purchase, .69 acres of land in Dunellen through the school board's adoption of Resolution 18-10. I believe that was provided in your board packet. May I have a motion?
I'm going to move.
Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion on this?
I want to tell you, when I looked at the murals on here, I did want for the lawyer, for our lawyer to really look at these murals from now on. Because murals are something, it's a lot of money. It really, it really is a lot of money. I had a client and she had to give, just for the land, they sold it, they had said they had it and they owned it. And then after a while, someone came to the, for the murals, and after they got the murals, right, they had more money for it. So, I think the lawyer would be to look at that, you know, for every time we look for, for we sell, you know, our lands, okay? All right, thank you.
Okay, David Hurley did talk with us and referenced this.
Yes, absolutely. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please vote aye and opposed like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. Dr. Mayor, you have a turnaround school update for us?
We do tonight. So, aboard to the podium is Ms. Hamby, the Director of Curriculum Instruction. And joining her will be our three area directors, Ms. Keinert for Area 1, Mr. Curly, who's Area 2, and Mr. Whitehouse, Area 3. You have the PowerPoint there with you and then you have your new binder that they'll give you some orientation to.
Hey, good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Mr. Gibbs, Mrs. Martinez, Lopez. At the end of August, as a team, we shared that the beginning of the year academic, discipline, and attendance data as a baseline for each of the differentiated accountability and the lowest 300 schools. This evening, quarter-one data will be shared for each of the differentiated accountability schools, which will include the quarterly standards mastery assessment results, attendance, and discipline. The data will be organized and will be reviewed by each area. In addition, the school counseling and assessment department provided, like Dr. Mayor mentioned, the quick fact sheets and a binder for each of you. This evening, unfortunately, Mr. McGowan is under the weather, so I want to give a shout out to him because he does an outstanding job with his department, along with the area directors supporting our schools. So, Mr. Whitehouse is going to be presenting the data and doing the overview of the data this evening. So, he's the Area 3 Director, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Whitehouse.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby. Good evening, Board. I'm going to do my best to pinch hit for Mr. McGowan. He has very big shoes to fill, so I will do my best crack. So, what we're going to be talking about tonight with our schools is looking at the QSMA data, which you remember last year, those quarterly standard mastery assessments were new assessments that we created. And we're going to be looking at how they compare last year to this year, and then also providing you some comparison, quarter-one discipline data and attendance data from last year to this year. So, we're going to start off with Anthony and I'm going to orient you to a few of the things on here so you're aware. But before I do that, I want to talk just a little bit about the data, just to make sure we're all on the same page with why we're looking at this data. So, the first thing that I want to point out is the validity of our QSMA data. Last year, this was a new assessment, as I mentioned before. And so, we weren't really sure how reliable this data was as a reference point. So, what we discovered at the end of the year when we looked through this data is that this is indeed a very reliable assessment. Not only is it reliable, but when we match up our students and how they perform on the FSA, we saw very similar results between them on how they performed on the QSMA. So, for instance, I know Mr. McGowan shared the specific data with you in an earlier work session, but for instance, a third grader who scored a Level 3 on the FSA would have averaged about a 59% on the QSMA across the year. So, that's the validity of our data. The second point I want to talk about is we also brought in groups of teachers over the summer to provide some teacher input on the items that we're using on these assessments. And that's important, one, to get the buy-in, but two, to also have an extra set of eyes to make sure that what we're assessing and how we're assessing it is meeting the requirements of the state and the item specifications for the Florida Standards Assessment. The third part I'm going to talk about is the shift in our standards and what we're assessing. So, the QSMA last year is different than the QSMA this year. We are testing different standards at different times in the year. The way we have shifted it this year is we are now actually testing our students by cluster, reporting clusters for ELA. So, when we talk about clusters, English Language Arts is broken up into three different reporting clusters for us, for our students. We look at key ideas and details, we look at craft and structure, and we look at integration of knowledge and ideas. So, each quarter, we are assessing just those clusters. Last year, however, on the QSMA, there was a mixture of standards. So, some of our standards came from Cluster 1, some from Cluster 2, some from Cluster 3. So, what we're actually assessing is going to be a little different, and I'm going to talk about in a minute how that's going to impact what you'll see on the results. The reason behind why we made this shift is it's actually going to help us do a better job of analyzing the data at the school level. Because what we can do now with the QSMA data is we can actually take Cluster 1 student performance on the FSA last year, how did the third graders at a specific school like Anthony perform on the Cluster 1 standards of the FSA compared with how are they performing now on that same cluster of standards on the QSMA, to really look at, are our students growing? Not just are they proficient, but are they showing learning gains? Because with most of these schools we're going to talk about in the turnaround status, we're not going to see huge proficiency numbers. We know that because they're DNF schools. What we are going to see and what our hope is and our focus is for this year is getting learning gains for all those students. So, we're moving our Level 1s to Level 2s and we're moving our Level 2s into proficiency status. The other point that I want to talk about is the cohort comparison, which you're going to see on here. So, if you'll look up at the screen right now for Anthony Elementary, what you'll see is the QSMA comparison last year to this year. What I don't want you to do is the tendency to look straight across and see third grade 17, third grade 18. While that is data we can look at, the more important thing is to look at third grade last year compared to fourth grade this year, which is why we've added that color feature in, so you can compare the cohort performance last year to the cohort performance this year. So, we really are looking apples to apples with the same students. So, what you'll notice at Anthony for last year, when we look at ELA, we see an improvement in fourth grade from how they performed last year's third grade and almost the same performance in fifth grade. But again, I want to point out, what we're testing is slightly different. So, last year, quarter 1, we tested a lot of Cluster 2 standards, which is actually the standards that as a district, we perform better in. So, we would actually expect to see lower scores from our data this year because we're testing the more challenging standards first and we, our students historically, have not done as well on key ideas and details. So, when we see the improvement, that's actually a positive sign for us that our students are showing gains. The other thing that we did that we don't have on the PowerPoint, but we were able to look school by school and student by student at Cluster 1 from FSA last year to Cluster 1 this year. And what we saw in all of our schools was a positive trend, meaning all of our students and all of our grade levels at all of our turnaround schools are showing better performance now after a nine weeks' worth of instruction, targeting just Cluster 1, just key ideas and details with those students compared to how they performed last year on the FSA. The math standards, however, we are testing pretty much the same standards we did last year. So, this is really a good comparison. And again, you'll see cohort to cohort, the green showing that we are seeing growth. So, we are seeing better scores from that cohort, third to fourth and fourth to fifth, at Anthony Elementary School. So, you're going to see a similar comparison for each of our schools, but I just want to take time to orient you to where this is. And the rest of the slides, I'm going to go through a little bit quicker since you know what you're looking at now. The other part we're going to show you for each of these schools is the attendance and the discipline data. So, the attendance data, remember, we're looking last year first quarter average daily attendance compared to this year first quarter average daily attendance. And what you'll see from all the schools is that there may be slight increases or slight decreases. We're talking at most schools, half a percentage point, a quarter of a percentage point, not a large difference. But what you will know is that the average daily attendance rate for Marion County is roughly 93%. And you'll see that all of our turnaround schools are actually averaging above the district average, which is a positive trend for those schools. So, Anthony, again, you'll see a slight increase in their daily attendance from quarter 1 last year to this year. And then the discipline data, this is not number of students, this is number of incidents. And I think that's important to point out because sometimes we'll see a lot of, a large number, but we're really only talking about a small handful of students that are getting multiple referrals because we're working on addressing their behaviors and creating interventions that will solve those behaviors with those students on the campus. So, we're talking 46 incidents last year for, 34 this year. All right, the next one is East Marion. And again, we'll just go through these very quickly, but you'll see positive trends compared on the QSMA data from last year to this year, fourth and fifth grade in ELA, and also on math, same thing. Green is good. You'll see East Marion also a slight uptick in the average daily attendance this year, first quarter compared to last year, and a decrease in the discipline number of incidents from first quarter last year to this year. All right, Evergreen, so this is one I know you're particularly interested in, so we're going to talk just briefly about what you're seeing here in the data. Again, what you're going to know with this data is important to realize that we lost a number of students from each cohort. There are fewer students at Evergreen this year than there were last year. So, even though we're looking cohort to cohort, the makeup of the students in those cohorts may be different. So, whereas there may have been 100 students in third grade last year, there may only be 75 students this year, and it may be a different mixture of those students, which would result in slightly different results in what we're seeing. So, you'll see on their third to fourth grade, looks like a decrease between last year and this year in ELA and math, and an increase fourth to fifth. What we do see, however, though, when we look at purely cohort to cohort on the clusters, Evergreen is showing between third and fourth grade FSA score, Cluster 1 key ideas and details last year to the first QSMA, those students are showing on average an increase in their scores, and the same with their fifth grade scores. So, we are seeing a positive trend when we look purely at individual student scores last year to individual student scores this year. And again, we look at attendance, and I'll point out, because I know that attendance looks alarming, but it's really not a very large percentage point drop. It's still above the district average. And the other important thing to note is, when you have fewer students, if the same number of students are absent, it's actually a greater percentage of your students that are absent, even though it's the same number of kids. So, when we see that decline in attendance percentage, it's also a factor of the fact that there are fewer kids there at the campus. But we do see, the positive note there on the other side is quarter-one discipline comparison, much fewer incidents last year quarter-one compared to this year. Pheasant Elementary, again, same scenario. What we're seeing is smaller population of students, so not quite the exact same cohort that we're analyzing. But again, when you look at Cluster 1 comparison last year on the FSA, to Cluster 1 this quarter QSMA after nine weeks of instruction, there are gains being shown for those students on average by grade level. Also worth noting, since fourth grade, you'll see is the grade level that did decline a good bit, that was a grade level where there were a lot of openings at the beginning of the year that they were able to fill at this point. So, they now all have certified teachers in front of them. So, those teachers were a little bit behind the eight ball in getting that instruction going in those classrooms, but I know from talking... But I know from talking with Ms. Kyron that they have worked out a very good game plan of how they're going to go back and readdress those standards to make sure those students are able to master them throughout the year. And again, attendance, very small decrease in the attendance, and then discipline as well. Oakcrest Elementary, which is another one I know you guys are very interested in seeing, we're seeing positive trends here on the QSMA to QSMA, and also very positive trends when we look at Cluster One last year versus Cluster One this year. And again, positive trends when we look at math and when we look at fourth and fifth grade, both of them for math. The attendance is roughly the same as it was last year, and the number of discipline incidents is roughly the same Quarter One to Quarter One as it was last year as well. Reddick Collier, again, another one of our schools I know you're interested in. We are seeing very positive trends here as well, from third to fourth grade on the QSMA and fourth to fifth grade, very good gains from those students. And also in math, you'll see sizable gains, especially looking fourth grade to fifth grade, thirty percent last year to forty-six percent average score this year, which is a very positive trend in math for the hard work they're doing out there at Reddick Collier. And when we look at their attendance, they have improved attendance for the first quarter from last year compared to this year, and a slight increase in the discipline comparison. And one thing I'll note that, I think it's germane in this conversation when we look at discipline, is the number of our rural schools, you remember, we added Dean units back into those schools this year. And so sometimes what we'll see as a reaction to that is because there is somebody there full-time to be able to handle discipline and process discipline, there may be an uptick in teachers referring that discipline over to them instead of trying to address some of those behaviors in the classroom. And then last for Area One, we have Wyman Park. Again, moved from a F to a C last year, and we're continuing to see positive trends with their data in ELA and in math. And when you look at their attendance, virtually the same as it was last year, and a slight uptick in their discipline comparison. At this point, if there's any questions for Area One, I know Ms. Kyron is happy to address any of those questions right now.
One of the things that's always interesting, I can see the ups and downs, and that's very clear. But one of the things I'd like, at some point, well, I'm not going to, well, one of y'all, anyway, I'd like to know what you're doing to address that. And when I say this now, when I look at the grade levels, the grade levels, we see up and down movement. But at some point, I'd like for you to address the board on what are y'all doing with some of the teachers that are having some difficulty? You know, and this is one of the things I'm saying. See, you've given me a good picture of what is occurring in the school. Now I want to drill down a little bit in there and say, well, Mrs. Jones has missed ten days out of school. That might have an issue. That's just an example of what I'm looking for. What I was saying, at some point, we're going to have to drill down into those numbers.
Yes.
You know, I know it's getting close to time for us to start evaluating and all that, but we need to start drilling down into them because I think at some point, we're going to have to do that.
Yeah, so, and we can definitely do much more detailed at a board work session.
Right.
But this is a quick overview of how we address this. Each of the area directors, we meet with our principals and do monthly data chats with them. So when this QSMA came out, we sat down and went through the data with them. We looked at these trends, but also much more detailed trends that go right to the teacher level and right to the student level, to really talk about individual students that aren't showing gains, how are we addressing those individual students through our remediation process that we have built into our schedule now at all of our elementary schools.
May I suggest this, you know, each one of us have a section of the schools. And rather than, at some point, you bring it all in here and you shotgun the whole school board, why not to just have it so I would come to the schools in my region? And then we can talk about what we need to talk about in terms of that. And when we come back as a collective whole, everybody will know what is actually occurring in their region. And I'm thinking that would be a good way of identifying something without having all of y'all fighting.
And the learning walks are very good to get that information. And I've been attending the learning walks, and you do learn, and you do see, they talk to you about the teachers that need the extra help and what they're doing. So that's a great idea, Bobby.
Okay, let's drill down into it. That's what I'm looking for.
Well, on these area schools, I wasn't going to bring it up tonight, but Beth, I think you received the same email I did. I think there are some ESE units being moved from Oakcrest to Anthony and Spar. And how is that going to affect Anthony? Like, that was the first I had heard of that.
Ms. Alves?
Alves.
Alves, is she still here?
She is here. Can y'all address that, or do you want me? I can grab it.
Or one of you can address it, but I asked the question, and I was very pleased with the answer, so I think y'all need to hear it.
So I can certainly address that answer. I think she's on her way as well. I have spent twenty-three years in the district in Marion County. I started as an ESE Inclusion Teacher at Wyman Park in nineteen ninety-four. And over the years, we, and I don't know when you want to chime in, but over the years, we have watched some of our most critical needs students, our ESE students, not get the support that we need to be providing them, as well as the ESE teachers in our self-contained classrooms. So Mrs. Alves, as our new ESE Director, met with me, we met with Dr. Mayer, Dr. Grantham, and we came up with a plan to help address some of these needs for our ESE special needs students.
Specifically, the way our programs have been currently outlined is that students are spread all over the district and all over each area, and they have intensive individualized needs. When that happens, our resources are spread extremely thin, and we're not able to give the intensity of programming and services that these students demonstrate a need for. So by hubbing these students by their exceptionality and their needs, we're able to provide more intensive programming and supports in those classrooms. So for example, you mentioned Anthony and Spar. They're going to, with this hubbed program, as we roll it out, they're going to have a full-time behavior specialist at that school from the beginning of the school day to the end of the school day. They are going to be there in those classrooms every single day, providing that level of support and the level of type of programming a student needs. For example, students with autism, really, we know that an applied behavior analysis methodology or an ABA methodology is what makes the biggest gains for our students. By being able to hub the programs together, we're going to be able to provide that kind of methodology to the students that show this need and have a behavior specialist who's working very closely in those classrooms. They're not going to be in an office down the hall or showing up for an hour here or an hour there. They're physically going to be in those classrooms all day, every day. And we're able to do that by hubbing these programs.
That specialist couldn't be at Oakcrest? I'm a little confused, I think, on that part, why the specialist couldn't be there. And my concern is, as you mentioned, we have autistic students, and we know they need the routines, and then we're pulling them from what they're familiar with in the middle of the school year. So can you explain that?
I can, because at Oakcrest, it's not just students with autism. Those classes are all mixed together. So there's some students with learning disabilities in that classroom, there's students with autism needs, there's students with needs for EBD, there's students for all kinds of needs, all in the classes mixed together. In order to separate that all out, it can't be done just on Oakcrest campus. We would have to reproduce that on three different campuses, or four, potentially. This way, we're able to get it at Anthony and Spar, and we're able to use our resources in a way that gets most of the supports in there immediately. I think one of the things that shows how well we've worked on this program and rolled it out, we have met with the teachers at those schools. We actually have an opposite problem that they all want to go with this program. They don't, exciting for us is that they know the level of support they're going to be getting. They want to go, and they want to be part of this as we roll it out. So we really have spent a lot of time working through this, and we have talked greatly and agonized over, do we do it now? Do we do it in the fall? When do we do it? And we really believe our kids need the services now, and we cannot provide that intensity if we leave it as-is for the remainder of the school year, and not the programming that they need.
Have you had discussions with the parents?
That was, we were hoping this hadn't come out yet. The parents were all going to be notified the week after Thanksgiving. We were in the initial stages. We have met with principals. We had met with the teachers that would be involved, and the paraprofessionals. The next step was for us to reach out to the parents, and somehow, it got to you all and now to a public board meeting before we've had that opportunity to speak with parents. We had other steps to go through as we went through it, and unfortunately, somehow, it got out before we got to the point where we were able to have that conversation. What is in line is there will be an open house at both of those sites for parents to come in, see the schools, see the programs, see the classrooms, and be able to actually experience the programming that's actually going to be provided for their children. And we're doing that before winter break, so that they can have that experience, so they can see the program and be ready to go forward.
Mrs. Alves, you've done this in Collier County, and it was very successful.
Yes, ma'am, we did. And we were able to make so many gains in our programs for students with disabilities that they were at or above the state average in all of their least restrictive environment, as well as our students with disabilities were meeting the state targets for proficiency. And that was a big step. Now, that took several years. We started this process fourteen years ago. And we started this process in one area and then moved forward to other areas of the district, which is what we're trying to replicate here. The demographics are very, very similar. And as I know all of you are aware, the ESE Department is under scrutiny from the state because of the lack of progress that we have made in the ESE Department. So these are ways to make these changes going forward.
Do we know and understand what the, with Anthony being a bottom-three-hundred school, I mean, what will happen, I mean, with these grades and these scores? And it's also my understanding, after reading the email, that, like at Anthony, for example, they'll be losing a computer lab or certain things. I mean, there seems to be a domino effect a little bit and some confusion and misunderstandings. So I, you know, as a board member, I would like to know how moving these students, disrupting them, disrupting the other classrooms, and putting them in a bottom-three-hundred school, you know, how this is going to affect them? Have we thoroughly thought this out?
Absolutely. And I will let you know, the students that are moving to Anthony, the majority of the students that are in that move to Anthony are students on a modified curriculum. So they take the Florida Standards Alternative Assessment. So they are not students who are taking the typical FSA scores. So their scores, they do count, but they count in a different way.
Right.
So it should not impact that.
For the students that are regular ed students that are being disrupted from losing certain programs, how is that affecting them, such as?
My knowledge up to us meeting with the principal, there was never a discussion of a computer lab from that school being moved. I know that was what was in the email. I saw the email today. So I can't speak to that. I'd have to reach out to the principal of the school to discuss that. But it's my understanding that that was not the plan of a classroom that was being taken.
Okay, thank you. Can you clarify that and then just put that in email for me?
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, one of the things I'm asking now, I'm hearing that all the moves are in the north end of the county, is that correct?
Yes, we are starting in Area One.
Okay, now, Area One also houses fiddlers. Now, how are you all tapping into the services that will be provided by fiddler?
Yes, we are. Once these moves have been made, schools like Oakcrest, Reddick Collier, Evergreen, that still have a varying exceptionalities program for students with learning disability and academic needs, we will be having the Florida Inclusion Network coming in and providing training in those schools, as well as working directly with those teachers, as well as bringing in other trainers who are able to assist in differentiating the instruction.
Okay, and that's important to me because I know we have the resources out there.
Absolutely.
Okay, now, I'm going to say again, and I heard what Ms. King was talking about. Guys, when y'all move people, kids around, y'all need to let them know, and then y'all don't have to worry about it's something get out of the bag.
Well, we thought we were doing the right steps.
I know, I know.
And I understand now that maybe we should have done it at the same time, but we wanted to speak with the teachers at that school before parents, and the paraprofessionals before the parents were told, so that they had that professional courtesy that they knew that this was happening before we reached out to parents.
How long has this plan been going on?
We have been looking at the data and looking at the numbers since probably early September. It's just gotten to this point that we had worked through every single one of those steps and identified potential students, identified locations, identified staff members that would be able to shift to provide that service at those schools.
Yeah, I just, again, I want to know, I'm very uncomfortable moving these students in January, and including teachers. I mean, they're going to probably spend their Christmas, their holiday break, maybe move in classrooms or something. But moving these students in the middle of the year and disrupting their schedules and their parents' schedules and their comfort zones, I'm very uncomfortable with that. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
And some of the parents, too, I mean, I received a call from one of the schools. And the parents, some of them do transport their own children. Some are transported by the school system, but some do transport their own children. And they've made arrangements and everything with, to make that all work. And all for maybe nothing, to now it's fixing to change. And it's going to, and at Christmas time, they're going to be up in the air trying to figure out how this is going to happen. And I wish we had spoken to the parents, you know, we wonder why we don't get parental involvement. Parents, it seems like it's always the last to know in the last few years here. And so, you know, what, can you help us with that? When were you planning on talking to the parents again?
They were going to be notified about, the time we come back from Thanksgiving break is when the parents were being notified.
So?
We just have met with the teachers yesterday and today.
Okay.
So we were planning to meet with, or send the information to the parent.
How many students does this involve?
Approximately sixty.
Okay.
And that's from multiple schools, not just one school.
Okay. And how many of these children, I would be curious if you would send me an email. I know you didn't know that right off the bat. But how many of those children are transported by bus, so that, you know, at least they have transportation? I'd like to know, like, what number of them?
The majority of the students will be transported by bus. We're working with transportation as well. Because when we move a program, and we move a program, the students, unless the parents choose to transport them, they will get transportation to these sites. So transportation should not be an issue. But we are working with Transportation Department right now.
One thing that I have on it now, I know fiddlers is out there, and it's close proximity.
Yes, sir.
And it would be nice if you make sure the parents know that there are some additional resources that will be added to that. And the ride may not be that long if they know they're getting some additional resource.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And Dr. Alves, can you share what you're doing for the teachers that are moving?
The teachers, their classrooms, we are setting up everything that they need. And it will be in place, their rooms will be set up prior to them going out for winter break. We are sending a team to go out and do all of the setup, all of the materials, all of the things that they need to make these classrooms successful will already be there. So they are going to be set up for them prior to the parent coming to the open house. Those classrooms will be completely set up and ready to go. The teachers do not have to do anything over their break. They will not have to do anything when they get to their school. Everything will be ready to go for them. And we're working to provide training for them if they need it in between. But these are teachers that, these are teachers who are asking to go. They are, they were given the option of, you know, this is what we're doing. And so far, every single one of the teachers have said they want to go because the level of intense support and the programming that we're going to be providing, they're very excited that our kids are going to get the intensive programming that they need going forward. And we haven't had one teacher say to us, this is not something. And these are teachers who are in those classrooms, have not said to us that they do not want to go. They've all, matter of fact, we have one that's disappointed because we can't take all of them. So we're getting a lot of support, a lot of buy-in, and a lot of excitement from our teachers. And I will say, as a side effect, one of the things we found in my previous district was we didn't have the turnover of teachers in those programs because we were providing that intensive support and the intensive programming in those rooms, we didn't have. And that was one of the things that got better. We didn't have turnover in those classrooms quite as frequently. So we're trying to address each one of those issues that we know face us. So we're trying to address each one of those issues that, that we know face us and try to give that support and give the support not only to the teachers, but give the programming to the kids that we know are gonna make the difference for them.
That's good. As long as we don't also affect the regular ed, um, teachers and students. Obviously, we heard about it, so there are some concerns there.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and also, would you mention about the discussion with the union? You talked with the teacher union.
Yes, we, we met with representatives from both the teachers' union and the, the paraprofessionals. And we have complete support from them. They were actually very excited that we were doing this. And actually, Mr. Avery made the comment that he was so pleased that we had done this in a thoughtful manner and that we weren't just doing it, um, very quickly without having any forethought or planning behind it.
Okay, now, in terms of that now, at local, at low performance schools, we usually give a little stipend. Are we gonna give them a little stipend for, for going out there?
If they move, they should get the same bonus if they get, but they're leaving Oak Crest to go, so they're already getting the stipend.
Already getting the stipend.
And, yeah, they sh- and Evergreen, so they're already getting the stipend, yes, sir. So they're going from one, they're still getting the bonus, yes, sir.
Okay. So I don't do anything about gas, but that's fine.
And it helps me to, it helps me to hear that, you know, as we're playing devil's advocate, kinda going through because, you know, a lot of times, the teachers, like the ones, the people have contacted me, they remember how it was. And so, the history of how it was, they get nervous. And it sounds like, it sounds like you're rebuilding a history to make the present a lot different. And so, I appreciate that. You've given me a great explanation because you've answered some of the concerns. One big concern was, how's it gonna, at SPAR specifically was, how is it going to affect, you know, we're not a lower 300 school. But now, next year, we might be a lower 300 school because we're changing, changing the dynamics at the school.
Let me address that too. But you have to have matched standard kids, so you have to be there for the October and the February FTE count. The kids will be at one school in October and another school in February, so that will not count for their school grade.
Okay, good.
This, this, next year it will, yes, ma'am.
Next year it will, but it won't hit this year.
No, ma'am, not this year. And I'll tell you too, at Anthony, we, like we said, most of those students will be alternately assessed, so it really won't impact their school grade. Now, at SPAR, it will, but, but remember, we're talking about 30 students with intense supports there too.
And those students, if they're getting the right programming, we will get learning gains.
You'll get gains.
If they're getting the right programming, they will get gains. If we continue on the path that we're going right now with all the students mixed in together and no intensive programming and no intensive supports, we're going to get minimal learning gains from that group. And we're going to continue to have the level of disciplinary issues that are taking away from the orderly operation of the school. We're not able to do the things we need to do. And by putting this hubbed program together, the supports are going to be so great in those programs that we're gonna see the learning gains in the students. And, and long run, we probably will see a help to those individual schools rather than a hindrance.
Well, at the time the person called me, they didn't really know about this extra support and everything, so they were just having a knee jerk, you know, because it was, they were very concerned about it. And they didn't really know about-
Exactly.
Other half.
Exactly. And that happens sometimes, we understand that.
And while we're at it, again, can I also ask that you please write, um, your goals and the visions, where we are heading and going, so the next year, we can look at this and reassess and make sure that we're heading in the right direction.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Is that in the-
Yes, ma'am, that's part of the strategic plan.
I was gonna say, that, you know, the measurable goals that we're-
Ms. King, there'll be an ESE data point on that strategic plan too. So, last year or this year?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alves. Okay, Mr. Whitehouse, you may proceed.
We're gonna move a little south now and look at Area Two schools, which is Mr. Curly's area. So we're gonna look at Bellevue Santos, Emerald Shores, Greenway, and Legacy.
Let me ask you something, before you get started, how is iReady tagging off of this?
So, iReady is still being used in all these schools. And we've only done AP One assessments, so when we do AP Two in January, we'll be able to actually look at growth with iReady as well and match that up to what we're seeing with the QSMAs. Because we test at different times, we look at those data points at different times.
Okay, okay.
All right, so Bellevue Elementary School, again, we're seeing some improvement in the scores. The only one spot there would be the fifth grade, um, students from fourth to fifth in ELA. But again, when we look at those students, Cluster One last year, FSA Cluster One this year, we are seeing gains for those students comparing the right standards to the right standards. Uh, and then math, we are seeing improvement in both grade levels there. Attendance data, again, slightly better, but only slightly. And then discipline data looks about the same as it was last year in terms of number of incidents. Bellevue Santos, um, and again, this is another one, when we look at the data, we see the yellow, which will jump out a little. But again, when we are looking at apples to apples and we're looking at Cluster One last year on the FSA versus Cluster One this year, we are seeing gains from our students comparing standards to standards. So even though the QSMA to QSMA doesn't reflect it as accurately, we are seeing improvement. And again, these are the standards our students tend to struggle with more than they do on the other standards. So we're, we're pleased to see growth in those standards. You also see the math scores, big improvements, especially from third to fourth grade where their teachers out there at Bellevue Santos. And then again, attendance data looks about the same and discipline data, a slight uptick in their discipline number of incidents. All right, Emerald Shores, uh, again, we're seeing pretty comparable data between those two. Um, I know, again, fourth grade, one of the areas that John and I talked about with math, there, there are a number of new teachers in their fourth grades. So that goes back to the level of support that we're providing and trying to catch those teachers up because, as you all know, it's not easy coming in as a new teacher and having to learn all the pieces and parts of what goes into this. Um, but again, when we look at Cluster One last year, Cluster One this year for Emerald Shores, we are seeing gains, fourth grade and fifth grade compared to how they performed last year on the FSA in reading. And so we are seeing improvement in both of those areas.
Okay, now, but just looking at the Emerald Shores and, and their discipline, that's, y'all got, I know. I know y'all, I know.
You jumped the gun there, uh, Mr. James. We were gonna meet that head on. Obviously, you see a, a large jump in the amount of, uh, discipline referrals between the first quarter of, uh, last year and the first quarter of this year. Uh, as Mr. Whitehouse mentioned, there's 18 new teachers to, uh, Emerald Shores this year. Not all new to profession, but new to Emerald Shores. That's one situation that pops out. Obviously, we wouldn't wanna see 200 increase in referrals. But, uh, Principal Houston there saw an issue and immediately brought in David Ellers. And they have instituted the Assertive Discipline Program, uh, this year. It did not begin until the second week of October. And much like a defensive driving course, it is teaching the teachers how to be more assertive instead of being reactionary to the behaviors that are happening. Now, it's important to note, so we were in school from August and September. This assertive discipline did not come in until the second week of October. Since that time, Mr. Ellers goes to the school and meets with the teachers every single Monday. Since that time, I don't have the granular details here, but we can get you more specific details in how the referrals have been affected since then. So not only 18 new teachers, but not being, sitting back and doing nothing for the rest of the time. Principal Houston reached out to Student Services and brought in David Ellers to institute that program. And I have no doubt that you will see an effect on these numbers as we roll into the third and the fourth quarter.
Okay. But again, I, I just want, wanna remind you now, the discipline usually i- is reflected in the academic performance as well. Because if not in school, they're not, they're not gonna perform well.
Or if they're, yeah, right, if they're not in the classroom or if a teacher's having to deal with a disruptive student or disruptive class, absolutely, there's no question about that.
Okay, y'all know that.
Yes, sir.
All right, Greenway Elementary, another one I know you guys are very interested in. We're seeing very positive trends there in ELA and in math and all grade levels. So that's a big kudos to the school and the work that they're doing at Greenway. And you'll also notice an improvement, a, a good improvement in the average daily attendance rate at Greenway and also a slight decrease in the number of discipline incidents from last year, quarter one to this year.
Are they using that assertive discipline program or are they doing?
No, they are not, they are not specifically using assertive discipline. Uh, we have an extra AP there too. I, I've spent many hours out there this year. And the things that they have, I tweeted it out earlier, I don't know if you, you had seen it, but, uh, just arrival, they have just a buzz about things that are going on out there. So it's just a positive energy around. And like Mr. James mentioned, when you have positivity around just student behaviors, it translates not only student data, but attendance rates and obviously discipline rates. So if I, if you haven't been out there, and those of you that serve at school, I would, I would recommend you going out there and just taking a look. It's a lot of really positive things happening at Greenway.
Ms. North's doing that energy bus.
She does, right, that's the program that she institutes. And, uh, if you go back and search my Twitter feed, you can see they have a speaker out there in the morning. I mean, it's dark, it's dark. Of course, the time has changed since then, but at that point, it was dark outside. But they have a speaker and it's light and the ener- the, um, the music is going. I mean, and I even tweeted, I said, I'd like to get out of the car and go to school here just becau-. And it gets the, the students started off on a, on a really great foot every day. Yeah, that's neat.
All right, Legacy Elementary, again, another school showing lots of positive trends, third to fourth and fourth to fifth in both ELA and in math. And also showing improvement in average daily attendance rate and a slight decrease in the number of discipline incidents compared with last year first quarter. And that wraps up Area Two. Any final questions with Area Two before we move on to Area Three? All right, so Area Three, my schools, we have three schools that we're gonna be talking about. The first one is College Park Elementary. And you'll see, it appears to be stagnant when we're looking at QSMA ELA from last year to this year. But again, this is another one of those where we look at standard to standard, Cluster One last year FSA versus Cluster One where we are now after nine weeks of instruction. There are gains evident in third grade to fourth and fourth grade to fifth. And I can talk to you from personal experience, because these are my schools, that I've sat there, we've looked through data. We've talked about the individual teacher level and how we can provide additional support for the individual teacher, but also the students, individual students, and how we're going to address students who are not making progress and making sure that we're using our interventions throughout the day to provide the correct instruction to those students and improve throughout the year. So I'm, I'm very confident what I see out there. And from week one until now, I've seen great improvements in terms of classroom instruction and the level of focus that those teachers have on the students and the data and making sure that they're making good decisions daily about their kids. And again, when we look at their attendance, we see an increase in their average daily attendance and a slight uptick in, uh, quarter one discipline comparison last year to this year. Marion Oaks Elementary, again, it appears to be the exact same scores from last year to this year. But remember, we're looking at different standards and I feel like a broken record now. But when we look at last year Cluster One on the FSA to this year, we're seeing very positive trends at Marion Oaks. And this is one, when we got down to the student level, we saw a lot of growth from our bottom quartile students. And they have a very strong focus on their bottom quartile right now. And we saw a lot of growth in terms of how those students performed on key ideas and details last year versus how they're doing now after nine weeks of instruction. And this is another group that is very focused on what they're doing to make sure that every day, they're providing quality checks for understanding so that they can make sure they know where their students are on a daily basis and make readresments to what they're doing in instruction the following day to meet those needs. And again, we look at attendance, very similar attendance from last year to this year and just a slight uptick in discipline quarter one to quarter one this year. And the last one is Sunrise, which as you know, does not have a fifth grade because that fifth grade is housed at Horizon. So we only get one real cohort comparison. Uh, again, it looks from QSMA to QSMA that we do not have a growth. But when, again, when you look at just Cluster One and looking at the correct standards compare last year to this year, we are seeing a positive trend in ELA. And then obviously, you can see a positive trend comparing the same standards in math for a third to fourth grade last year to this year. And attendance roughly the same as it was last year and a slight decrease in discipline last year to this year. Any questions about the Area Three schools?
I just have a question about the fifth graders at Horizon.
Yes.
Do they have the QSMAs? Are they doing the same type of curriculum? Can we get that fifth grade comparison?
Certainly, yes.
I would just be interested.
Yes, certainly. And when I go out to meet with Mr. Mayor, we, we talk about two separate things. We talk about that fifth grade group specifically because what they're doing and the type of instruction obviously looks very different from what they'll see in secondary classrooms. Um, and so we are seeing a lot of gains again out of those students. Um, and they're actually piloting a little different program with the math students to accelerate there's some of their math students that are stronger and need that extra push to get learning gains. And so we're actually piloting merging fifth and sixth grade math standards with some of their teachers at Horizon. And so those students are getting dual instruction, both in the fifth grade and sixth grades. So that when they move next year, they'll be able to jump into seventh grade math without having missed any of the necessary instruction in the sixth grade. So we're very pleased with what we've seen so far. And if this really works and, and turns out well, then it's something that we can replicate to other schools to push our high-end kids. Because oftentimes, we get really focused on bottom quartile. We forget those level four and five kids need to be challenged and pushed as well or they won't stay level fours and fives and they're doing a really good job of that.
So are some of our fours and fives actually attending, doing some of the middle school curriculum?
They're doing the curriculum, they're still with their fifth grade teachers. So we wrote a, a separate curriculum app just for those teachers to use that blends the two standards together. They're still taking the fifth grade math QSMA because that's what they'll have to do in the fifth grade FSA, even though they're learning some sixth grade standards with it. They're still being taught the fifth grade curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that gets us through our areas. So follow up, our, our next accountability reports we're gonna give you, quarter two, which will be in January, um, with the QSMA update for quarter two. And we should also probably have some iReady AP Two data at that point that we can share. And then quarter three, April nine. Um, just to kinda summarize what we talked about, what we're seeing is positive trends. Um, we're cautiously optimistic about the positive trends that we're seeing because it's just one quarter and we still have three more to go before we get to the assessment. But the trends are moving in the right direction. We see a really good strength now that we can see learning gains. So again, we're not gonna see huge increase in proficiency, although we would love that if we do. But our target right now is, are we making gains? Are our students learning? And we're closing that achievement gap at all those schools. And right now, that's trending in the positive direction. So any final questions for wrap-up?
Any questions, Mr. James?
The thing I, I just wanna say now, when I look at, when I look at all the things that we do, if one side of the level, uh, the ledger is up here, the other side gonna be affected as well. I'm talking about, when I talk in terms of, I'm looking at Legacy and I'm looking at some of the schools and looking at all the discipline areas that you are looking at that do affect what is going on the other side of the ledger. And, and as the, as we make the turn for home, I know we need to make the turn for home and those kids behaving and coming to school because I think that will really affect what you guys are doing. That's a comment, that's not a question. Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you very much, very informative. Thank you. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight. Do we have any one that's-
Yes.
Yes, we do, okay. Mr. Gibbs?
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting either regarding tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than the speaker or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding discipline matters at that time. To ensure student privacy only, a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Okay, Secretary, do we have any?
Yes. Jeremiah Lassiter?
Good evening, folks. I'm Jeremiah Laster. Um, I guess you need my address, 2755 Northeast 31st Place here in Ocala. Um, I just had a quick thing that I wanted to bring to the board's attention. I appreciate you guys' time tonight. Um, I have two high school daughters who, in the recent weeks, have come home with their new student IDs, which they absolutely love. They were told that they are required to wear them at all times, um, especially in light of last year's tragic events at Forest, uh, that they are to wear them on their neck, on their persons at all times. Thought that was a great idea, helps to quickly identify any problems, any people who shouldn't be there. Uh, my biggest concern came though when they showed me the lanyards that they're required to wear. showed me the lanyards that they're required to wear. They're required a blue lanyard. It's a, you know, clip-on, holds it in place, makes it easily visible. The biggest problem that I see with it, and my question to you guys, it is not a breakaway lanyard. It is a standard rope lanyard, wraps all the way around the neck, fastened at both ends onto the clip. It is a metal clip. My concern is if something were to happen, heavens forbid, somebody in horseplay or caught up in a fight or an emergency situation, that thing grabs onto something, my children could very easily be strangled. I'm very concerned about that. So I would like to know what the school board thinks that we can do. Maybe you guys can look into getting breakaway lanyards. I know there's not a ginormous cost difference. I've done a lot of Google research on it. There's not a huge difference in price to get a breakaway lanyard, but it would be a very big safety issue. And I really appreciate your attention to it.
Never thought of that.
No, and I know that it's not required in the new safety, but it is something that I, that I think we probably ought to take a look at.
We put it on dogs and horses.
Yeah.
Dr. Grantham, would you, would you talk to him? And thank you for bringing that up because I never would have thought of that.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
We'll address that. The badge is required, but the lanyard was a courtesy, it's like a spirit item. So there are alternates to that with the clips and the magnets. So we'll take care of that.
That can be done.
Yeah, that's a good, I would never.
That's.
Melissa Merriweather?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Melissa Merriweather. My address is 52 Lakeview Drive West, Ocala, Florida, 34482. Thank you for your time. I'm an instructional paraprofessional and have been with the Posno Alternative to School Suspension Program, also known as PASS, for nearly seven years. Actually, February will make seven years. My question is, how can we improve communications and transfer expectations to minimize adverse impact to employees, their families, and students? This year, without previous announcement, without direct notification to me from any supervisor, I was moved from alternative learning to student services, which came with the move from the PASS program being at, on the MTI campus, where it's been for nearly seven years, to the Forest High School campus. This movement was in direct violation of the contract between the district and MESP, as I should have been notified within the last, or by the last 10 days of last school year. Today, I received notice that I am being moved again and am to report to a DJJ facility on Thursday morning. At the beginning of this school year, I was forced to find a new daycare who was accepting infants because of the move to Forest High School. Now, I will either need to drive my girls to school, drive my son out to daycare, and then drive an additional 30 minutes in the other direction to arrive to work, or find another daycare by tomorrow. Movements such as this also impact our students. Our site maintains the most students in attendance each year of the four PASS sites. Although numbers have declined drastically over the past two years, we are still talking over 1,100 students impacted by these changes. Students have been moved from what I'm told was about 900 square feet, the classrooms, to a 660 square foot portable. This is pushed first through 12th grade into one small space as opposed to the separate space, which was a safer environment for all. Now, we are removing the support of a second educator to further hinder our students and the PASS program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, now we need to look at that now.
Mr. Ellers is here.
Well, somebody, somebody get with her because.
Mr. Ellers.
I'm sorry, may I add one other thing? My direct supervisor was surprised at this because she was unaware when I called her to say, what's happening? And it seems as though that was kind of what happened above her a little bit too. So I don't know where this originated, and I'm not sure that a lot of people do. Mr. Ellers himself was surprised.
About a year ago. I know things were changing for that, but I think if you talk with, at that time, it was Mark. So she should go with the.
Mr. Ellers.
Yeah.
Yes, we need, we have a problem here.
Yeah, somebody ought to be able to tell her where she's going to be tomorrow without her finding out somewhere.
Mr. Ellers. Mr. Ellers will be the person that you.
He's, he's here.
Yeah.
I spoke with him this afternoon because I went to go turn in my time sheet and he was there. But I spoke with Laurel Lynn Bowie before that. She had only gotten a few minutes with him and he hadn't known about it previously. So Mr. Thomas was the one who informed me. I don't know when he was informed, but he was unaware that I was unaware.
We have, we have a problem. We need to figure this out.
We need to work on that.
Ms. Robbins, can you please? Thank you.
Yeah, let's, let's help. We don't need, we don't need to be looking for daycares in the middle of.
Okay, now, y'all gonna let, let her get out there doing, she disappear? No, I just wanted, I think y'all should know what was the results of that.
I'd like to know the results. I'd like to know how y'all worked it all out.
May I have a motion to adopt the 2018-19 Student Progression Plan? Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James.
The 2018-19 Student Progression Plan will reflect the changes in legislation in order to be compliant with Florida statute 1008.25 and to clarify language concerning student progression in Marion County.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board on this issue? Hearing none. All those in favor of the Student Progression Plan, please vote aye and opposed, like sign. I don't have anyone's vote. It hadn't come up. Mm-hmm. Okay, I got it. Okay, we just got it.
We just came up.
The motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed, like sign. The motion passed five zero. On the next three motions, if there is any questions, questions, Mr. Knight is here. May I have a motion to approve deductive change order number two, work authorization number 34 to return unspent funds concerning campus fencing project at Sunrise Elementary School in the amount of $5,000 to, $5,224. Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion or questions? Alright, all those in favor, please vote aye. Opposed, like sign.
Nothing came up from her.
Did it come through?
Mine came.
Okay, now it is.
Mr. James?
Well, I gotta do it again, huh?
I'm giving up twice too.
Thank you, sir. Um, I think this is.
I have to do it two times.
Okay. Motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve deductive change order number one, work authorization number 40 for direct purchase of fencing material at Sunrise Elementary School returning to the district, $627,528.76. Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed, like sign. The motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve deductive change order number two, amendment number one, to return unspent funds concerning phase one of new classroom and music arts suite addition at Wyamina Park Elementary School in the amount of $83,547.09.
Second.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please vote aye and opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $66,516.56. $2,000 to Bellevue High School from Brooks Sports. One beef heifer valued at $1,050 to Donellen High School from Doug Wrestler, Dr. Ocean, and Keith Poole. $4,334.88 to 8th Street Elementary from the Public Education Foundation. $4,000 to Hillcrest Public Schools from Rockefeller Philanthropy Advisors via the Public Education Foundation. $2,775.16 to Hillcrest Public School from Rack Room Shoes. $2,550 to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from the Public Education Foundation for the Grants for Great Ideas. $1,600 to Lakewear High School from Kiwanis Club Several Spring Shores. $1,000 to Lakewear High School from Lakewear High School Baseball Boosters. $2,500 to Madison Street Academy from an anonymous donor. $3,709.89 to Madison Street Academy from the Public Education Foundation Grants for Great Ideas. Dodge Ram valued at $2,600 to Marion Technical Institute from Donna N. Safran. Chevy Corvette valued at $2,500 to Marion Technical Institute from Doug Trodson. $2,500 to North Marion Middle School from their business partner Seminole Stores via the Public Education Foundation. Spirit shirts, science kits, books, perfect attendance incentives, and recess toys valued at $8,466.05 to Oak Crest Elementary from the Junior League of Ocala. $4,716 to Oak Crest Elementary from the Public Education Foundation. $4,159.58 to Oak Crest Elementary from the Public Education Foundation. $2,650 to Stanton Weersdale Elementary from the Public Education Foundation for Grants for Great Ideas. $4,000 to Vanguard High School from Marion County Hospital District. $4,945 to Vanguard High School from the Public Education Foundation Grants for Great Ideas. And $5,000 to Vanguard High School from the Public Education Foundation for the Grants for Great Ideas. May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor of accepting these donations, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passed five zeros. And Mr. James, one last time, would you do the thanks?
It just so happened I was thinking about that. Again, on behalf of all the students in Marion County, we'd like to thank donors for, for their donation tonight because it's always a pleasure to work with people that really care about what's going on in their schools. So again, on behalf of the school board and the students that this will affect, we want to thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. This board approved grant application.
Yeah, this is different. It's a procedural thing.
Yeah, we don't have to vote on it. We just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I need to read it? Okay, sorry. This board approved grant application will allow funding to be utilized for school hardening at the following schools: Bellevue High School, Bellevue Middle, Donellen High, 8th Street Elementary, Francis Marion Military Academy, Forest High, Lakewear High, Marion Charter, McIntosh Charter, Ocali Charter, Osceola Middle, and Vanguard High. These schools will have fences erected to create single points of entry. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, December 6th, 2018 at 9 o'clock AM. The purpose of the work session is to discuss construction projects update, model policy, MTI discussion, purchase of new buses, selling district property, Reddick Call Your Water update, MTSS intervention and enrichment updates, and the security force update. With that, Ms. Boynton, would you like to start tonight with board concerns?
Okay, I have one, two concerns. One, I know we have superintendent that will be a appointed one. What I would like for the, for the school board members to understand, because you have two, you will have two persons as the school board members, I would, I would like for y'all to take your time. The reason why, training. Because once you have another superintendent instantly, then it will change everything around. But I would think you ought to, I think everybody be trained about a superintendent, appointed one, and you have to vote one in. Remember, we had a, a new lawyer. We have to look, we had a, we didn't have an adversity, we didn't have a committee for that one. But I think you need a committee one because we have the community, the community. We have the CEP about the money, you know? I think you should come together, really. Don't just instantly just do it. Because our, our county, I think is the best one that we have, you know? I really do think that. The teachers, the students, you know? But I also think that the, the, that all this business that come money for us, or even just in our county, they need to come together, have a, have a committee, talk about everything, and not just say, boop, we want to do it. So I really want you to think about it, the school board members, to think about it. Training is what you have to have. It's easy to say, yes, we want to do a yes or no, but training is so important. You remember, I went to off to this, for this, for, in Florida, up and down for these superintendent, whether or not elected one or either a superintendent one, appointed one. Well, I think we need to look, look at that. It's very important, very important for. It's very import- important, very important, for every student, teacher, throughout our whole county. And bring the, bring the, bring the people together with that, okay? I really want you to think about that, please. Okay? My last one, okay? Alright, hold on for a second, and I wouldn't put this on, I'm gonna try to read this, okay? School board members, students, parents, employees, and our commu- community, thank you, thank you for those four years, for voting for me, for just being, being there for me. Um, I have learned a lot of things here, in, in our county, about education, you know? I always knew about taxes, I knew everything about, uh, different things, even being I was, um, for a lawyer I was, but, but education has, has been my heart, you know? Been my heart for so many years, you know? And I want to thank you all, uh, just for those two terms. It means a lot for me, it really, really does, um. I, um, you know, it's just, I'm not gonna cry right now, because I don't think, I don't think I have no more. You know why? I did it, you know? Even when I did it, I think God can say, he did it already. And I'm, and I'm so happy, you know, um. I want to say two things, students, con- continue to be better. All of our students, please, continue to be better. I'll, I'll be looking about your attendance, grades, the FSA, FSA, and of course, your discipline. I'm gonna be looking at that, okay, students? Okay? Because most of y'all call me, and you know when you call me, you're parents, and you're doing so much better. So all of y'all, I'm gonna be looking at that, okay? Um, teachers and your principals, you know what to do, and do it good still. You understand? There's so many things in, in, in my heart right now, but I really want to take all of you. Thank you, and I'm still here in Marion County, okay? Thank you.
That's it. Mr. James.
I got two things. One, I'll just, the, uh, the appointed superintendent. We are not reinventing the wheel, so I, I don't want anybody to do that. One of the things I would like to encourage the board to do is for us to immediately, and I'm sure Beth has probably did that, notify the Florida School Boards Association to really give, to go ahead and give us a good trend in terms of what we need to do and how we need to conduct this process. I want the board to understand that there are more than one, uh, school district that appointed, that had, had that on the referendum. So the quicker we start working with, with the Florida School Board Association, that we, it will be quicker, we will have an opportunity to get the better of the people that they normally will send in to our county. Okay, if we did that, we would, uh, ensure that the taxpayers of Marion County, that we are very, being very prudent about how we are, are going through this process. And I know people are looking for answers right now, but the answer is, let's go to the Florida School Boards Association and ask for their assistance. We've been through this before. There, there is an inexpensive way for us to, uh, to get, uh, the assistance that we need. We went through this with, uh, with the process with the attorney. We had somebody to lead us through this process. This, if we did this, then we can get timeframes, we can get, um, some good professional advice, and we will open this thing up the way it should be, and the way we thought it should be. This is what I have in terms of that. And I hope you guys know where I'm going with this, because you've been there, and you know that the Florida School Boards Association have so much, re- so many resources that we can take advantage of, and I think that's, if we could, uh, agree that this is the direction, and we could direct the, the chair to make those calls, and give it, Andrea, what is it, Andrea?
Andrea, Mr. Senior. Actually, Mr. James, Mr. Gibbs and I have a meeting with her tomorrow.
That's good. See, I'm talking my stuff. Okay, let me get to something important. Uh, I'd like for Dr. Butler to come up for a minute. Doctor, uh, Doctor Grantham, I know that's your person, but I have to say what I gotta say. Would you talk a little bit about what you got going, uh, on the fifteenth?
Happy for you, but sad for us.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, we are extremely excited about our family and parent and community engagement affair that's going to happen on the fifteenth. We're gonna start out our morning with about forty-nine families that are registered. And they're gonna come in, they're going to, um, they've already picked their sessions, so they're going to get information on anti-bullying, they're gonna get information on how to be proactive in communicating with the school about their child. They're going to, um, be able to listen to, um, Mr. Ellers, and also, we partnered with PD, and also with, um, Mr. Lopez, he's gonna talk to them about the importance of attendance. And then, our highlight is our take and bake. So they're going to have an opportunity, um, we partner with early learning, so Hippie is going to do role-playing for them, to show them what this looks like when you read a book with your child at home, and then you read a recipe, and then you prepare that meal, because we want them to see that, that home-to-school connection is seamless, it's something that you're doing anyway. Our target audience in the morning is early learning, so we have our students and parents that are non-school age. We also partnered with, um, the Episcopal Children's Center, because we wanted to ensure that these community partnerships, we want to model for our schools the importance of being stronger together. So, we have partnerships, on top of partnerships, we also have, uh, the Hospital School District, and I don't want to leave anybody out, um, we have prescription cards, and then, um, Mr. James has facilitated us being able to give away some turkeys to those families.
Nice.
And, um, also, our, uh, Family and Community Engagement Coordinator has, um, partnered with other community members, so that they also will have a brown bag of all the dressings to go with that turkey. And, our final partnership is with Student Nutrition, they have been absolutely phenomenal. Uh, the recipes have been provided, uh, we worked with elementary ed to, uh, have the skills and the standards in place, also with early learning, to get those skills in place for our early learning, um, students, because we're also gonna replicate this in the evening for our principals. Their professional development will include all of the things that I mentioned, but they will also have addition, uh, to student-led conferencing, so that they can decide if they want to take that back to their school. We know that when students are able to talk about their learning, they own it. And, um, also, we're gonna talk about culturally responsive schools. So, we're gonna talk about what that looks like when, when students and when we present things that are responsive to them. So we have a lot going on, a lot of work that's gone into this event, and the team has been chomping at the bit. Everybody in our building is working, putting binders together, doing it all, so, we're excited.
Eight-thirty Thursday morning.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things I wanted to say is that Howard Academy and the resources they provide to West Oco- uh, West O'Callaghan is very important to me. And I want to commend you for a job well done. Okay, when I say this to you, that the Howard Academy has really blossomed into something that's outstanding. And, uh, the people and the support that it has received has been tremendous. And we should talk about, uh, people that you, uh, you admire, and people that you look at and say, hey, they are good examples of what it should be about. I know we have, we're looking for somebody to replace her. I was gonna ask Doctor Grantham, look at her sister, maybe some of that rubbed off on her.
Already tried, Mr. James.
Okay, but the thing I wanted to say more than anything else is that it's very important to West O'Callaghan, and when we talk about this, I just wanted to know, Big Play McCray provided you the turkeys. And for the people that don't know who Big Play McCray is, I, I see, uh, Reverend Cummings back there smiling, because he heard the name Big Play McCray, because he was a young player at Donellen High School. That was exceptional. And he went to the University of Florida, and now he, he's up there with the, um, team in Jacksonville. I, I'm a Buccaneer person, so I don't usually call that name, but I would watch him play. So he made it possible for all those things to happen, in terms of turkeys and things like that, for the community, uh, in, in West O'Callaghan, so, when you see it, it's Big Play McCray. So if his mom walk in tomorrow, you know it's from, that's, it's from her. Again, I just want to thank you on behalf of, of the community for a job well done. Thank you.
For letting me serve, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Doctor Betts. Anything else, Mr. James?
That's it.
Are you sure? About female? Are you sure? Okay.
I'm outta here.
Oh, gosh. Ms. Stacy.
I would just like to dovetail off of what Mr. James said about going ahead and getting our plans together. Um, I did check with, I always look at, I go to the top, it's just what I do, go straight to the top. Looked at, um, St. John's, I was curious how they obtained their, um, their superintendent, their last, and they did go through School Board Association. Um, and so, when the people that, um, have top-ranked school districts, if it was good enough for them, you know, I, I say that's, that's probably, we're, we're headed in the right direction. And, um, and I'd like to thank Bobby and Angie. I'll probably start crying, but I'm trying not to. But Angie and I have been friends thirty years, almost now. And it's been so hard, because we haven't really, since I've been on the school board for six years, we really haven't, once, before I got on the school board, we were friends, we did things together. But then, once I got on the school board, we really, really didn't want any perception out there that we were doing, because we, she and I, we'd go to Olive Garden together, we, we always did things together, and all of a sudden, for six years, we couldn't. And she's my blood sister. Years ago, we did a direct blood transfusion, and we are blood sisters, right Angie?
For me, I need money, I need some blood, right? I need blood, okay?
She needed the blood, and so I gave her an in-line, um, back in the nineteen nineties, I guess it was. But, um, so we've always said we were blood sisters, and so, um, Angie and I can get back to our paling around, and it's gonna be great to call Mr. James, I already told him, I will be calling him frequently to get some information to help me, because his wisdom from all of his many, many years. And that's what's nice about, um, his son went, his son, our, our children are, Teal and Bevan are now thirty years old, they were in kindergarten together at Madison Street, and they've grown up together, and I think they still do Facebook together, so, um, you know, so there's, we have a history also. And so, um, I'm so excited to, to silver lining, I'm selfish, the silver lining is, I get to talk to him anytime I want to now. So, um, I'll be calling you soon. Maybe see y'all this year. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Ms. King?
Um, I just also want to say that it's been a pleasure working with you, Angie. Um, when I came on as a newly elected, uh, school board member, you were the chair, and I just remember you always being a very kind and gracious chairwoman, and you were a wonderful example of what a chairwoman should be, and I wish you the best moving forward. And Mr. James, you have always been a, um, strong voice, with many years of experience and knowledge, and, um, also, being a newbie, you just let me follow you along. And you helped lead the way for me, and you were also a mentor and a great example, um, in how to lead. Um, I am gonna miss your Bobby-isms also, as Ms. Anetti mentioned, um, I'm gonna miss the shock value, the confusion, and the levity that they would all, um, frequently bring. And I will also miss your sayings, you come to school, you work hard, and you, you behave. But my words to you are, don't come to school, don't work hard, but behave. And I will...
Don't forget how to cross the street in Tallahassee.
I know, I almost said that, and I was like, that's gonna make me look really bad. But he did teach me how to cross the street in Tallahassee. You watch the cars and not the lights.
That is exactly right.
So, thank you.
Thank you, and I, I too want to thank both of you, and, and wish you well in, in your next endeavors, and, and hope that, Mr. James, that you'll get to lots of basketball games, and playing lots of golf, and doing all those things that, that we know you love to do. Um, and I hope you'll both stay involved in, in the community, because you are rocks in the community, and, and we need, we need you there. Uh, yes, you can tell us what you're gonna be doing.
Well, I'm gonna still be doing taxes, you know, I still, I have my, at my office. But also, decided I would have a, um, magazine and...
A magazine.
Newspaper. It's called Black Circle, so I'm gonna have a little newspaper, and magazines, okay? And you might be on it, you might see on it, okay?
Congratulations. Thank you both. Um, I would like to recognize Nicholas Fisher, who is in the back, he is from troop number seventy-two, which is right across the street here at First Presbyterian. He's working on his Communications Merit Badge, so, welcome.
Mr. James, I promise you and Ms. Boynton that we will do this process right. We will, we will do it right from the beginning, we will involve our community, we will be sure that we put the things in place to make sure that we are successful. I look forward to serving with Ms. Sroer and with Reverend Cummings, and, and getting, uh, getting our ship in line, so that we can, we can do this process right. Um, I will be at Howard Academy on Thursday, I'm looking so forward to that. When I saw the recipe and the lesson, I suggested to Doctor Butler that they have a recipe a month, and we build a cookbook for our, for our families, so that they can have something to cook each month. And I, I, I applaud you, and we will miss you, for, absolutely, for certain. I want to wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving, our students and families. Um, if you're traveling, please be safe, uh, you have the week off, and we want you to relax and refresh, our teachers, and come back again, ready to learn. So I wish all of you a safe and blessed Thanksgiving. Doctor Mayer?
Thank you so much. Uh, Officer Hunt, thanks for being here tonight, and I understand we get you next week, too. So welcome back, welcome back to you. Another reminder to the public that this Saturday, um, at the Vanguard High School gym at three P.M., is the Jim Haley Memorial, so the public is very welcome. Uh, so please do come out and celebrate this legend. I was getting ready for work one day last week, and the Wall Street Journal reporter comes on the radio at about five a.m., and he was the lead story of that national broadcast, and that just brought it all home. So again, we look forward to seeing everybody Saturday for that. Uh, Ms. McCall mentioned Thanksgiving break, so a reminder to, uh, the community that our schools will be closed, so that we can celebrate this Family Week from Monday through Friday. District offices are open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but this is a great opportunity for our district folks to take some vacation days with school not in session, but, uh, those folks will have their out-of-office on their, their emails and on their phone, so, if you reach out, just know that it's a good chance that somebody will be on vacation, but they'll have a out-of-office on who you can connect if, if you need an immediate answer. Today, I visited, um, Vanguard High School and the Future Teacher Academy. This is one of our new choice academies that has come under vocational side of the house, and Ms. Bates and our students invited me to talk to their, um, future educator group, and, and, uh, our future is bright, our future is bright. It was a very exciting visit, a Q and A session with those, those high school kids who want to go on and be teachers and stay here in Marion County. So I encourage you to connect with them, and to take a visit out there and meet these young people who, uh, already in high school, they know, they, that they have that in their heart, to be a teacher. Uh, it's a great, it's a great program. And finally, again, thank you, uh, Mr. James, uh, for, for your service, and, um, it was mentioned frequently, but, but your, your Mr. James-isms are, will resonate with me always, and thank you for that. And no, we've said before, but this is still your home, it will always be your home, you will always be welcome, and, uh, remember, you said that you would dance at my wedding, and so you can't go anywhere till that happens, and that, that, that's not happening. So you'll be around for a very, you'll be around for a very long time, so that's, that's our reassurance, that's our reassurance. And, um, thank you, sir, for everything, and, and I know we will see you soon. And, and Ms. Boynton, thank you, thank you for, um, for always just picking up the phone and asking questions, and, and, and reaching out, um, uh, to, to just have discussions, it's so appreciated. And it was mentioned by Ms. Anetti about your book of poetry, which, which I have on my desk, and, um, as a poetress, I'm sure you appreciate my Angelou. And today, when I was thinking about, um, just words, words... And today, when I was thinking about just words, words to thank you, her poem, "I Rise," popped into, yes. And that's, I thought of you, and so, her last, the last three, three stanzas, "I Rise, I Rise, I Rise." Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Gibbs?
I had nothing legal tonight, but I do wanna thank Ms. Boynton and Mr. James for being there for guidance with me on my first year and a half here with the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through October 25th, 2018. This is Martinez Lopez. Are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-19-20, JD-19-21, JD-19-23, JD-19-25E, JD-19-26, JD-19-27, JD-19-28, JD-19-29, JD-19-30, JD-19-31, JD-19-32, JD-19-33E, JD-19-34, JD-19-35, JD-19-36, JD-19-37, JD-19-38, JD-19-39E, JD-19-40E, JD-19-41, JD-19-42, JD-19-43, JD-19-44, JD-19-45, JD-19-46, JD-19-47E, JD-19-49E, JD-19-50, JD-19-51, JD-19-52, JD-19-53, JD-19-54, JD-19-55E, JD-19-57E, JD-19-58, JD-19-59, all with educational services through the remainder of the 2018-19 school year and the first semester of the 2019-20 school year. Moved by Ms. Boynton?
Okay, before I second that, well, I can second it and then have Mr. Ellers come up. I second, but I need to, we need to have Mr. Ellers come up.
Mr. Ellers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, we got all those expulsion, now, tell us what happened here.
We had a significant number of what we would call a fray, dating back to September 24th. It's on this packet. Essentially, twenty-five students out of this list were involved in six separate incidents, some of which five to six students were involved.
Okay, let me just say that, so, it's all over here, you will hear me now. When I was reading those things, I noticed that they were going to SERMI. A lot of those kids are going to SERMI. So, the problem I have with this is the fact that we're moving those kids from one school to another school. And if they were fighting at one school and whatever they were, and now they over at SERMI, then I got a problem with SERMI now. Okay, when I look at all the, I look at all these kids going in there, and I know as we go through the process, SERMI have a capacity of what?
Approximately two hundred seats over there.
Okay, we just took twenty-five or thirty of them there, didn't we?
One thing, we will have a significant number of students returning back to base in January. So, it frees up, typically, we get full, I checked with them about two weeks ago, and they said we're in good shape with seats.
Now, the thing, I, I'm gonna support this because you talked to me about it, but I wanted it to be heard. Now, when you suspend, all kids, all the kids get the same amount of time, and we just cookie cutter the whole group, then, to me, we're not really delving into what actually occurred. I'm sure you did.
At the school sites, they do very thorough investigations. I will tell you, this is very parsed out when you look at this number of students. And again, we're talking very egregious incidents. We, we had a fight at one of our schools that involved six students. A student that was a bystander was hurt during that affray. It's a danger to our staff. Another incident, we had a stu, a staff member that fell backwards and cracked his head, thankfully, not injured seriously. They're very serious incidents, and we're taking a very hard line, as is the board, about students that are causing this level of disruption.
But all of them will be going to SERMI, or most of them will be going...
SERMI or New Leaf. And one thing the board does, and something, when we talk about expulsions, traditionally, an expulsion is without services. But, and I agree with the board and the superintendent, generally, we wanna provide services to kids. We don't wanna just kick kids out and put them on the street for a year and a half. So, I think the board has been very proactive in providing educational opportunities for these students. And if they do cause problems, it's in board policy that we will expel them without services from SERMI if they cause problems on that campus.
Okay, the problem I have with what you say, when you, when you talk to me, you really get me going a little bit. When I look at, in terms of working with kids, I understand the severity of whatever occurred. I understand that. But by the same token, when I look at all those kids going to the same place, have the problem been resolved? Are they going, are we just moving it over there so the people at SERMI can deal with, with less staff?
I, I won't say they have a lower staff ratio, but it, but it's fairly equivalent. And one thing I will tell you, as you know, with an, with an expulsion with services, they've been there, most of these students have already been there, some of them since mid-September, or late September, I should say, based on this packet. We've had one student that was expelled, I believe, without services or is being recommended for expulsion without services, that I don't think was involved in any of these incidents. So, they've been doing relatively well to this point at SERMI from every indication. But we could do some follow-up on those students to make sure that that's the case.
Okay, and when I look at these students, I know that they are aware that they could have, if they go and behave and all that stuff, that they will have an early entry.
They, they can apply for early reentry, that paperwork is provided with them, with the final expulsion paperwork.
And, and also, Mr. James, some of the parents did call me, and they, me and the parent went to their school. And so, they know what was gonna happen, everything. And I think you know it too, also, they understand those things. And at first, they were upset, but instantly, after we, they, they talked, and then I talked, and I even talked to the students, and they began, the parents began to say, "We understand," you know? And, you know, and I looked to Mr. Ellers and the principals, and they listened to, and I said, so, they understood what was gonna happen. But I agree with you, I understand what you're saying, Mr. James, but it's so many. But we only have two places right there. And I think, I'm glad you told, show them again, they, they can have another time again, if they do it right.
They did the right thing.
They have to do the right, yeah, I say, but you, thank you for saying that again. So, if you want to say it again, then the parents understood us, may, know another time, for real, Mr. James. Because, and it, to me, it was a lot of, I instantly called our lawyer to say, "What can we do?" Instantly, and then, he told me everything we need to do, so...
You know, the thing I find so interesting, and sometime I wish I didn't know as much as I do know. You know, when it comes to discipline and stuff like that, sometime I just wish I didn't know as much as I do know. You know, I spent, I spent almost seventeen, almost twenty years roaming the halls dealing with discipline. And I know that kids come back early, you got one over here, you got one over there, and all of them show up in the same place, they're gonna do a good job. I understand all that stuff. But what I am saying is I wanna make sure, and y'all need to make sure, that we are taking a good look at what we're doing with discipline. If you notice, when I was looking at the turnaround thing, you know? And I know that when we put principals in schools, that have effect on what you do. So, you make me think I got here on the back of a turnip truck. Because I know how those schools operate, I know high schools.
I think you had taught, remember they had changed the discipline because of the...
Have they changed students? Okay, let's go.
Yeah, but remember, these are things that you can get at, these changes, right now.
You know, I would like to say one thing, I did speak to Mr. Ellers. And he knows I was real rowled about this. But he shared the, the extensiveness of some of this, some of the, some of the stuff these kids were doing. But I know that kids get into a pack, and they get, and they just get, their adrenaline gets going, and they just, like, just go crazy. I mean, I've seen my two boys in my house just go crazy, you know, and I know how they do. And that's why I really, and I asked you, I said, now, they do know they have an early entry possibility, and if they really work hard, if they know from day one, you work really, really hard, you'll return to your base school, and kinda not be telling them, like, in the middle, like, really preach it to them, like, I know you gave it to them on a piece of paper, but to a kid, okay, they saw the piece of paper this week, in a week, that piece of paper, they forgot about it, or they've lost it, or they, or the discussion has stopped. Just if they keep reminded on at SERMI, and I know they probably do, that...
Mr. Nebe does a great job of that.
You can work your way out of here, because I've always told y'all, I believe in discipline, but I don't believe in execution.
We have a student that I'm...
I want them to have a future.
I've got a student coming to you, I believe, on the December packet that is an early reentry that Mr. Nebe really advocated for and reached out to the student to encourage him to apply for early reentry.
Good. And I, and I have confidence in you.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for calling me, and we had a talk about this. And I'm just gonna ask you to keep on doing what you're doing and get them back to us for early reentry, if at all possible. Okay, thanks.
And I'm hoping that this is sending a really powerful message that we are not gonna tolerate this type of discipline, these fights that continue to go on. So, I'm hoping, Mr. Ellers, you can share with us down the road that we've had a decrease in these mob fights is what happens with them. And so, so, thank you. And I don't like the numbers either, but I think we have to, we have to do what we have to do tonight. So, with that, I will call for the votes. So, all of those in favor of all of these expulsions, please vote aye. And opposed, like, sign. My computer's gone out, but... Is it a black screen? Yeah, it's... Mine just popped up again, did it?
Yeah, I put it through again. It's coming through.
Okay, and it passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-19-56 without educational services through the remainder of the 2018-19 school year and the first semester of the 2019-20 school year? Moved by Ms. Boynton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please vote aye, and opposed, like, sign.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. Boynton?
Hang on. I wanna talk about something. And I'm sitting here looking at, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna say what I'm thinking. Now, we talked about those towers. Okay, now, and we have agreed, we have agreed on that, on the price and all that stuff. And the issue is, now, in the past, when we had a problem similar to this, and the issue was advertising of something, we'd either go and put that in the American paper or another paper, because it'd only say it'd have to be advertised. Okay, but there are other papers out there that can be advertised.
You can advertise, the problem is the time. It's generally seven days, and since we don't have the two-week spread on this one, it's next week, we don't have seven days to fix the advertising issue. That's, that's the problem with this, this month, because it's the organizational meeting. We don't have the scheduled board meeting at its normal time on that last Tuesday, it's a week up.
In our meeting, didn't we just say, in our meeting, we had already said, yes, we were on, and...
The board, the board had consensus as to the prices, but...
And then we got an email, right, after that.
You have to have it at a properly-noticed board meeting, and the documents have to be advertised with the notice. So, the problem is, there was an issue with the document that was provided, which I advised the board on. So, now, they gave me a new document, I haven't reviewed it, 'cause I just got it today. I will have to review it, and then, if it's good, I can put it on the agenda, but it won't be for December, or November 20th. The next meeting is December 11th. If we had our normal board meeting in November, we could get it on the next November agenda. But since it's the organizational meeting next week, today, it's less than a week's advertising time. That's the issue that we have this month.
But with the new agreement with the contract, once you review it, then we can get this, 'cause we have come to consensus on...
The consensus is the numbers, I'm fine with, those are the numbers that are gonna go in. I have to make sure all the other terms are acceptable, so...
Okay, since this has gone kind of an unusual situation, and can we put it as an urgent item?
I don't, I don't believe it would qualify as an urgent item, there's no urgency for the district to agree on a contract with a potential vendor. If they were SROs and we needed funding, then that would be an emergency item. This doesn't affect any student welfare, health, or safety issues, this is simply a vendor contract.
Okay, that was, what was the second time, the second time on that, right? The first time, something with their contract, the second time was something with that contract, you know? That's a little different. So, we had all, we had all have voted, we had voted for this already, and so, now, we have to come back...
We didn't vote, we voted for...
We voted for the other, the first part, and then now with the second...
With Tarpon.
No, we haven't, we, you approved the assignment from G V H to Tarpon Towers. That's a different issue as far as, this is an agreement on the back rent that the board will accept for the past years, this is not an assignment. So, that's the issue that came up at the work session on Thursday.
At the work session, it came up.
Right, so, that, that isn't an assignment issue, this is a whole different issue on what the board will accept as back rent.
And we have agreed to that.
And the numbers are fine, yes, I'll stick those in, but it's a matter of how that agreement comes. And that's what was at issue, and the agreement I got, I wasn't comfortable with recommending to the board based on how it was provided.
Okay, let me just see, because y'all can shut me down. Is there any way we could give these people letters saying that this will come up on the, on the 20th, on that date? I don't know whether that will help them, I don't know what they're trying to do over there. If you get something to say that...
That's a business.
On December 11th?
Yeah, that this will be...
If I could interject, the problem you're gonna have is it's a new board. I mean, nobody can, we can't guarantee that they do...
They have a new board until the 20th.
I can't, it'll be December 11th is the next agenda, that is a new board. I can't get, I can't say this board can bind that board to do anything.
Well, there's still three of the remaining school board members.
And that's, as long as those three are in agreement, then the new board members are there.
As long as the two new board members know what's going on and how long we've been doing this, there should not be an issue, we need to resolve this.
And I don't disagree, but it's like, I can't advise the board to vote on anything that, you can't bind the next board, in essence, they will have to take up...
We can't vote on it anyway, it hasn't been advertised.
It has to be properly advertised and noted.
Legally, we, our hands are tied till December 11th.
Right, but it may help them do whatever they're trying to do.
They know that you've got consensus, and it's on the record here tonight, that, again, three board members at least are in consensus with those numbers. So, unless the new board members come on and make a... So unless the new board members come on and make a compelling argument to persuade one of you, then-
It is so confusing that I doubt very seriously they would do that because it is a very confusing issue.
And we've been at this thing since, uh, two thousand thirteen?
It's been a long time.
Before my time. I can't tell you how far it's been.
It's been a really long time.
Yeah.
So we would like it resolved December eleventh.
I'm, plan on bringing Tarpon Towers on December eleventh as well, so hopefully you can wrap up more than one.
Well-
It will help those, those two teachers to, I mean, uh, schools, you know, so they'll need to understand that.
So we can't give them something to say, where your credit is, is, we, this thing will come up on the date?
The board, the board can't vote on anything if it's not properly noted.
Okay.
I don't think we can do, I legally-
Us three will take very good care of ourselves so we will remain alive and well to come and vote.
I, you know, I, I mean, I'll deal with December eleventh unless there's issues-
Pray for an umbrella protection around us.
Okay, I, I, so moved.
So are you seconding that we adjourn?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning?
I forgot where we were. Thanks.
So, so all those in favor of adjourning, please vote aye.
Aye. Mr. James, you just, you ain't ready to let go.
No, he wasn't.
What now?
Mr. James has something else.
No, we, no, we've just voted to adjourn this meeting.
All right, guys. Y'all, y'all messing with me. That, that's okay.
We love you. That's all we're messing with.
Mr. Cummings?
Okay, passed five zero. Meeting adjourned at eight oh two.